Good evening and welcome to this September 8th, 2022 City Council Special Meeting. I am Mayor Ross, and tonight's special meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom, and tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, welcome everyone, thank you for joining us. Our acting city clerk, would you please take the role?
Ethan Benson? He will not be here tonight. Kara Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Lasse?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew? He is entering the building now. Do you want me to continue or?
Go ahead and then you can come back to him.
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Acting City Clerk. So, Councilmember Benson has requested to be excused from tonight's meeting. Is there a motion excusing Councilmember Benson from this evening?
So moved.
Second. So it's moved by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Christensen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those approve say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So the motion passes and he is excused. As a reminder, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking, and be sure to raise your hand. So we'll move to our first item in special business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the special meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember, Mayor Protem Mayhew, second by Councilmember Holloway, to approve this special agenda. Is there any discussion? So council, do you have an order of preference? We can either continue on deliberations of the PCI plan, which is the First Agenda Bill that is showing the 22-098?
Did we vote on the agenda?
You have not voted.
Okay.
So I'm throwing this out there.
Okay, thank you.
To come up with, if we want to possibly change it. So do you want to change order, where we can either continue on deliberations and -98, or we can move into the development agreement, which is -114? Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Can you explain the implications of the choice you're asking?
So the -98 is a continuation of our Plan Commercial Industrial Plan deliberations, which we have been doing. The second option is to move into a overview of the development agreement and start that discussion.
So what you're asking is, would we like to maybe start that discussion and then come back later to finish our deliberations on the other? Is that?
Correct.
I move that we reverse the order as the mayor proposes.
Second. Okay, it's moved by Mayor Protem Mayhew and second by Councilmember Christensen to start with Agenda Bill 22-114, which is the Stokami Mill Development Agreement. Any discussion? Further discussion? Councilmember Lasse?
I'm just curious if that decision impacts whether we should have the closed session prior to that, or do we need to rethink the whole order?
I believe that we can call a closed session at any point that you would like.
So just as long as it's been noticed, we can, we can?
Correct.
Move into closed session.
You can move, right. For example, if you, staff, myself and Mr. Rogers give a presentation on the development agreement, if you determine at that point you wanted to go into closed session to discuss either or both of the development agreement PCI plan, you could do that at that time.
Yeah, thank you for that.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed, nay? All right, we will change the order of the agenda, and we will go ahead and start with...
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
Was that a little dinosaur and now we need to vote on the main motion?
I didn't make a motion initially to do that.
Right, I think I made two different motions.
What was your first motion?
To adopt the agenda. Maybe we just take the vote, just in case, just to balance suspenders.
Okay, so the final vote on the agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Seeing all passes, so that we have approved the final agenda. So we will start with Stokami Mill Development Agreement, quasi judicial land use matter. And so we will turn this over, so first of all, discuss proposed development agreement between the city of Stokami and Stokami Mill Site Ventures pertaining to redevelopment of this Stokami Mill Site. The proposed agreement is related to the currently pending Plan Commercial Industrial Plan application, and we are not taking public comment tonight on the development agreement. The applicant and members of the public will have an opportunity to comment during the public hearing on Monday, September 12th, at the council meeting. So we'll turn this over to City Attorney Sterbank, who will address the legal parameters pertaining to the quasi judicial land use matters, including the appearance of fairness doctrine.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. As has been our practice, prior to the commencement of council consideration of a quasi judicial land use matter, I asked the council certain questions related to the appearance of fairness doctrine, potential bias, and other related issues. I've asked you a set of questions previously related to potential relationships either with, related to ownership interest in the mill site property, relationships, if any, with the applicant or opponents, and so I will just start generally by asking council, and you've all answered questions about that at prior meetings, that there weren't any such relationships. So I'll ask you individually if there's been any change in your relationship or potential relationship with either proponents or opponents since the last meeting. Councilmember Watten?
No change.
Councilmember Holloway?
No change.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
No change.
Councilmember Lasse?
No change.
Councilmember Christensen?
No change.
And Councilmember Johnson?
No change.
And then the other more specific questions, do you believe you stand to gain or lose directly as a result of approval or disapproval of the project? Councilmember Watten?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
No.
Councilmember Lasse?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Is there any reason that you believe you cannot judge the matter impartially? Councilmember Watten?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
No.
Councilmember Lasse?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
And Councilmember Johnson?
No.
And since the last time the matter was before you, have you had any ex parte contacts or communications, or received any, with either the proponents or opponents of the proposed mill site PCI plan or development agreement? Councilmember Watten?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
No.
Councilmember Lasse?
Just to clarify, is this with the opponents or proponents or general public?
Either or all.
I was approached by a community member and was asked when council was going to approve the mill site. I said, "The process is in progress and we are in deliberation phase, and the schedule is proceeding as has been presented," and I did not address the pointed question as it was asked.
And do you believe the communication affected your ability in any way to consider and decide on the proposal?
No, in no way.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
All right, thank you. Mayor, that concludes my questions. I would step, with the mayor's permission, step to the podium and speak about the development agreement.
Absolutely, yes, please.
All right, thank you. I'll ask Mr. Rogers, if he can, to pull up the proposed development agreement on the screen. Before we start going through the document, let me speak first about some procedural matter and then turn to the substance of the document itself. There's a public hearing on the development agreement scheduled for Monday's regular meeting. Your adopted rules, particularly Rule 9.3, provide for a process and time allotments for a public hearing. And generally speaking, it provides for a presentation by staff, then 10 minutes by a proponent or petitioner, followed by 10 minutes allotted to a primary opposition group, and three minutes per individual, then followed by rebuttal by staff, and I believe it's three minutes of rebuttal by the applicant. This is a large project, it's got the pieces, the PCI plan, it's a large development agreement. So first matter I would raise for council consideration, and of course, your rules provide, in any case, you can waive application of the rules, suspend them, you could move and approve a separate allocation for the upcoming matter. And so the purpose of this point is to ask council whether, given the complexity and size of the project and the agreement, whether you would want to consider different time allotments, for example, 20 and 20, and because the primary opposition group is, has quite a number of members of the public, for example, you could go 20 for the proponent, 20 for the primary opposition group, and reduce the three minutes per person to two minutes, so that you don't wind up with an allocation and then individual, all the individual members of the group getting up and taking three minutes, and then you may have considerably more time. So that's a suggestion, there would be other ways to do it. So I wanted to raise the issue and see if council is interested in discussing the process for Monday.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Yeah, so I just want to, so this is something that would occur on this coming Monday?
Related to the document that's before you tonight, that's the development agreement?
I understand, I'm just looking at the, we start with the round, just absorbing, I'm just trying to picture in my mind how much happens that night. So could you just say that again? There'd be a, a public hearing, and just run down again, our current rules would allow for what, and then what might be another option that you were sort of mentioning?
So, and this is Rule 9.3.1, of which I'm speaking, that would begin by the presiding officer, the mayor, declaring the meeting open, time for presentation by staff, questions of staff by council. Following that, the applicant is given 10 minutes to present. Following the applicant's presentation, the major opponent is allowed to speak for 10 minutes, then any interested person may be heard for three minutes each. So 10, 10, and 3. Following that, staff comments in response, either at the conclusion of each speaker's remarks or at the end, and then after everyone else has been given an opportunity to speak, the applicant is given three minutes to rebut under the, that's in Rule 9.3.2. So another way to do it would be to increase the time from 10, say, to 20 for the applicant and primary opponent, and potentially also reduce the, the time for each member, or make clear that whether you want, do or don't want to hear from individual members of the group that has just been given opposition time. Depending on how, how much time is in opposition, you could also decide to allow greater time for rebuttal by the applicant. Right now, the rule says three minutes. So if a lot of people stand up to speak in opposition and there's an opposition group, three minutes is a pretty short time for rebuttal.
How long would staff need?
I think for a presentation, 35 minutes, not very much. We're going to cover the primary substance as an outline tonight, answer questions, so I wouldn't anticipate a detailed staff presentation on the agreement on Monday. I looked at, is our touchy, Mr. Rogers?
Right.
So staff presentation would be fairly short, other than to the extent that rebuttal's needed or, or that council has questions following speaker remarks.
Councilwoman Watten?
I would be in favor of having two minutes each for individuals to speak.
Councilmember Holloway?
I get the general question. Do we have to decide this tonight, or can we decide this Monday when we actually see what the attendance is? If nobody shows up, why mess with the minutes?
You could decide, well, for one, you could have the conversation tonight, have the presentation, and then decide after, you know, after you've talked about the substance of the document, that may help you. If you wait until Monday, it'd be helpful, I think, to inform the parties, the primary parties, as well as members of the public, how much time they have so that people can prepare accordingly. You could decide as late as Monday, but the speakers wouldn't have as much ability to tailor their remarks to whatever you might decide.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Has either the applicant or the main opposition group submitted a request for additional time?
They have not.
Okay, have they indicated?
I think council for the applicant has indicated their perspective that this is a short period of time under the existing rule, given the complexity of the project.
Okay.
They've not submitted a formal request, however.
Okay, do we know if they would be agreeable to, for example, if we agreed to give both parties 20 minutes, whether all of the comments from the opposition group could be heard in that 20 minutes as opposed to hearing from them serially?
I don't know. We could certainly make that request.
Mayor Protem Mayhew? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I would probably, to the extent that we can give the, both groups additional time and try to have all of the folks from the opposition group in together, I'd prefer to still allow the general public to have their three minutes. I just want to make sure that everybody feels heard, because this is a really significant project.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
I have some similar thoughts. I was just trying to do some math here. First off, I, I don't, I'm just sort of imagining how this process possibly could go. I, I don't think I would find it helpful to sort of see a back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, especially if one group is largely affiliated. It's sort of a, a sort of debating kind of, I just don't, that would be hard for me to sort of see what's really being raised and understand. So my own point of view is that if, for example, we had 10 individual presenters at three minutes apiece, that tells me that's half an hour. My own thought is, the applicant ought to have a half an hour to rebut those, but I would rather see that happen, not back and forth, back and forth, but at the conclusion, and then they can make sort of their coherent points all at once. So, but I would like to see them...
That is the order of presentation contemplated by the existing rule?
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I'm just thinking about what I would find useful, and so to me, you know, there's sort of a question here of whether 10 minutes is sufficient time to make the initial presentation, and it sounds like you're not necessarily advising us, but you're pointing out that, given the complexity, 10 minutes may be a bit short. So I'm just sort of thinking through, whatever time we give to the applicant, I think, fine, the primary opponent should have the same amount of time. So if that's 10 minutes, it's 10. If it's 20, then it's 20, but let's give sufficient time for, for each to make their main points, but a fair amount of time. And then I'm in favor of letting individuals speak at three minutes apiece, but I'd rather hear from them serially, and then at the completion of that, take that amount of time and allow the applicant to then rebut or speak to those issues for an equal amount of time, or up to an equal amount of time, as they choose. That's what I would personally find the most useful. So I guess, based on everything I'm hearing, my thought is, fine, 20 minutes, 20 minutes, three minutes per speaker, although maybe we should limit the maximum number of speakers we're willing to hear from.
Better what?
Because otherwise, we could be here at 3:00 AM. Right? That is a common practice, I know, that other municipalities engage in, they'll put a maximum amount of time, and when that time's gone, the speaker's signed up in order and then that time's expired. So I'd be in favor of that, but, so maybe 20, 20, three minutes per speaker with maybe a lid on it, and then an equal amount of time to rebut would be what I would find most useful, for whatever it's worth, whatever you guys think.
Councilwoman Holloway?
So I agree with you, except I'm cognizant that many of the individual speakers will have overlapping points of order, so I would propose that they get, that you divide the time in half for rebuttal. So if there's 30 minutes of open speak, they get 15 minutes of rebuttal, because, again, some of them will be introductory statements, which are not subject to rebuttal, and some of them will be overlapping.
Councilor Johnson?
I think that I would tend to agree with Councilmember Holloway on that point, in that I find it hard to believe that all of the individual speakers would have unique points that they'd be trying to make that would need to be rebutted, but I also certainly agree with the Mayor Protem that three minutes for rebuttal to what could be a significant number of possible points that could be brought up doesn't sound reasonable either. So I like the idea of kind of the matching. So I think that I am concurring with Councilmember Holloway's modification on the Mayor Protem's point.
Any other comments?
So...
Mayor Protem Mayhew? Councilwoman Christensen?
Do we know whether the parties will also be submitting anything written? Because that might also be helpful.
I don't know, but can inquire.
Okay, because especially for both the parties and members of the general public, it may help to keep people on track and a little bit more clear with what their concerns are if they prepare it in writing in advance. And I'll, if that's right.
Certainly, at the public hearing on the PCI plan application, the primary opponents and a number of members of the public also submitted written comments in addition to their oral statements.
Okay. Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Yeah, so in order to change what's in our current rules of procedure, what, what would be needed? Would we, would be that, would that be something we might take action on tonight, so a motion and a vote, or what would be the mechanism by which we would change what's currently in our rules of procedure?
I think the appropriate action would be a motion to waive the current rules 9.3.1 and 2 related to public hearing time limits, and instead impose the following per whatever the motion specifies, and that, you know, you'd get a second and then vote on those amended time limits.
And are, noticing that we've done for this special meeting tonight would permit such an action at this meeting?
I believe it's covered under the general rubric of the development agreement, it would be appropriate.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
Move that we modify the council rules of procedure 9.3.1 for the purpose of Monday's public hearing on the mill site proposal, to change the ordering such that the applicant, that there's a staff presentation, there's an applicant presentation of up to 20 minutes, there's a primary opponent presentation of up to 20 minutes, there's individual speakers permitted three minutes each, and then the applicant is permitted a rebuttal period at the conclusion of those individual presentations equal to one and a half minutes times the number of individual speakers that there were, followed by staff, or I guess, just preceded by a further staff presentation.
Yeah, you came around the other way, but yeah, you got it. And I believe this is subsumed in the motion, the rebuttal time's in 9.3.2, so you said 9.3.1 and 2 would...
So are you...
Clarification to the motion.
Do you have a clarification to your motion?
I do. To clarify, I meant modifying 9.3.1 and 9.3.2.
Okay. And then when you are coming up with the amount of time to rebut, you're going through the 30 people and saying, "Oh, 17 spoke against it," so you're taking the 17 times your 1.5 minutes, so someone's keeping track then of those, times 1.4, and then that would be the amount of rebuttal period for the applicant. So then does the opponent also get three rebuttal options, or is it only applicant?
No, they do not.
Okay.
So it's a applicant, opponent, applicant rebuttal.
Okay.
Carry the one.
Okay. So it was second, okay, so any discussion then? Councilmember Lasse?
Remind, give me the, if you, if you would, please, the, the timing again of each of the, of the items that were just presented again.
The staff has five minutes, applicant and opponents each have 20 minutes, and then three minutes per speaker, and the applicant will be able to rebut at 1.5 minutes times the number of speakers that are opposed. Is that correct? Any further comments or discussion? I see some head...
It's hard to tell whether they're opposed or for. That's my only...
Councilor Johnson?
All right. Move to amend such that the amount of time for individual speakers would cap at 30 minutes of speaking time.
Second?
Just move to, move by Councilwoman Johnson, second by Mayor Protem Mayhew, to cap the total amount of speaking time to 30 minutes. Public?
Yeah.
Public speaking. Councilor Johnson, you want to follow up with that?
Yeah, and just to clarify in that, I said speaking time, I don't want to be including the shuffling around of people getting up and down from the microphone.
You keep track of that, Dana. Councilwoman Holloway?
And that'll be the priority order based on the sign up, and if so, we really do need to stress, sign up or don't speak. Somebody's going to have their feelings hurt that we didn't give them time.
Councilwoman Watten?
Point of clarification, since it is a hybrid meeting, how do we monitor who's online and who's in person?
Good question.
Or who signed up.
Councilwoman Christensen?
I, I understand the reasons behind using a cap, but I'm not in favor of one, guys. I'm sorry, I want to hear everybody who wants to speak have that chance.
Councilwoman Lasse?
I have the same opinion. I think, I appreciate the cap, but I think this is one of those times where we may have to go pretty long, so I think it's worth that.
Mayor, just a point of clarification or a question to council, when you're talking about members of the public, are you wanting to inform, is that including people who might also be members of an opponent group, or do you wish to make any distinction?
Are they wearing shirts? I don't know how to identify the people you're talking about out of the general public, so I...
One could ask, certainly, there were those who testified in the prior public hearing who identified themselves as associated, so there's, we have some idea, but, right, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be self-enforcing.
Yeah, I don't know.
Or, I'm sorry, I meant, it would be self-enforcing, it wouldn't be something really that we could police, but you could ask.
Point of order, if, if we identify a group of opponents then, and there are 10 people, and we give them three minutes each and they can combine it, would that be a fair way of distinguishing between who's part of the group they have to identify as being part of the group? And, and I would almost think that maybe two minutes per person might be more appropriate, and then they can consolidate.
So that's not necessarily point of order? So you're just having, you're making a comment?
I'm sorry. I just wanted a live enough discussion.
And my toes. Councilwoman Lasse?
Despite all that, the, I mean, we're, the applicant has 20 minutes, the opponents have 20 minutes. Those opponents are those that are specifically listed in the record. They would have 20 minutes, they could each individually speak, they could each, they could designate a representative, they could go through a number of different scenarios. They've given their time, now we're asking for the general public to speak, so I don't see where, do they get to speak again? I mean, if they spoke as part of the opponent group, then do they get to talk again another three minutes? I don't think so. I, I'm not trying to be harsh and limit the opportunity to say things, but I think that's the whole point. If the applicant has, has an opportunity to speak for 20 minutes, the opponents have a speak 20 minutes, and then let's hear from the public. That's, at least that's, but I don't want to limit the time that the public has to speak, so happy to hear what other council members have to.
Mayor Protem Mayhew?
I think we've strayed from the motion, the current little dinosaur, so my, I think there may be a motion that would be made in this regard that we could then talk about. With regard to the motion that's currently under discussion, which is the modification to limit the total time, I'm also not in favor of it, I seconded it so that we could have the discussion. I think I agree with other council members, this may be one that we just have to go long. This is a pretty big issue to our community, and I think we should invest the time, so I'm actually going to vote against that.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I almost didn't make the motion, but I thought that we should have the conversation as well. I am also against the motion, in which case I will be withdrawing it.
Does the person that second agree?
You just did.
I know you just did, but yes...
Well, I do, but I'm not sure. I think it now belongs to the council, the motion's been made and seconded.
You have to vote on it once, you can't pull a motion back.
You can't pull the motion back.
We can't?
No.
Not on, after discussion.
Not without the permission of the council.
Not without council agreeing to do that.
Counsel has to agree for him to pull it back, which, could we just agree to let him pull it back?
Got my vote agreed.
So we gotta vote to agree to vote?
Okay, so how about we just vote on it?
Can we call a question?
Just vote on it.
Yeah, all right, call the question.
Oh, 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 oh.
That brings...
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Councilor Johnson and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew to call the question. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of the calling the question?
Calling the question.
Voter.
Because it has to be two-thirds. So any opposed, nay? Okay, the question that's been called has been approved. We are moving to vote for adding a 30-minute cap speaking time. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion did not pass. So we are back to the original motion. Should I read it again? So the staff will have about five minutes presentation. The applicant and opponents each have 20 minutes. Then we will have public speakers, public speaking, allowed public speaking for three minutes each. And the applicant will have the chance to rebut at 1.5 minutes times the total number of speakers that were opposed. And then it ends. Councilor LaSae?
Move to, I don't know how to write the right words. Move that the opponents who speak during that portion of the meeting are not again called upon during speaker, the individual speaking time following.
So speakers may not speak twice?
Speakers may not speak twice.
Second.
Says, moved by Councilor LaSae, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew, that speakers may not speak twice.
Mayor, just a point of clarification. Is the motion aimed only at those who actually speak or who are affiliated members of the opponent group that speaks?
The motion is for those that are listed in the record and affiliated with the opponent group may speak as a group, as the applicant shall speak as a group. And then the individual speaking time is those not affiliated with the opponents or the applicants.
Oh. Councilor Holloway?
So...
Are we making a difference?
Well, no, it's, I don't know who may be silent affiliates for either the applicant or the proponent. I think we may ask that if you are already represented by one or the other, you not take up public time. But I'm not sure how to identify the individuals who shouldn't be speaking. I know there's some that are in the record, but there's some that aren't. So I think we ask nicely that the adults in the room behave, and if you're represented, don't need to get up and speak. I know the look, I would have given it too.
So we just, okay. So we have a, the way we, I have understood was speakers may not speak twice. Councilor LaSae?
Yeah, I'm trying to struggle with this too, because I think what we're trying to do is keep it fair and equitable and not inadvertently allow one group to have extra time just because we're allowing speakers to show up. I think that applies to the applicant as well. We want the applicant to use their 20 minutes for their position. We want the opponent group, which is listed in the record, to have to speak their position. Then we want to hear from the general public. And while, I do agree with Councilmember Holloway, we have to let the, you know, we have to trust that there's adults in the room and that both opponents and applicants won't bring in the masses to then speak additionally about other points and other things and do that. But I'm, so I'm trying to find a way to allow there to be a consensus. So it's kind of, I'm not sure the motion as it exists currently represents that by saying speakers may only speak once. Although I repeated it when it was said. Does anybody have any suggestions on how that could be improved? Because I'm struggling.
You're stuck. I mean, I don't think we're gonna allow anyone to get up and speak again, so. But you...
But it goes to, yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Right, Councilor LaSae?
It goes to if the applicant group has one person speaking, but four or five other folks in the meeting, and they want to come up and say something in rebuttal of what the opponents may have spoken, that gives extra time to the applicant. Same may go on the other side. If the opponents give their 20 minutes and decide that they didn't get enough time, and they have, they assemble a group of people, five or six, to come in and speak three minutes on other points, they've essentially increased the amount of time that we've set as being available for public speaking on, in that sense. But at the same time, I mean, how do you enforce that? How do you, how do we know? You know, we can't ask everybody to wear one color shirt for this group and one color shirt for that group. It doesn't work that way.
Councilor Holloway?
And that's part of my, I don't think you can. And it becomes our responsibility as a council to do the weighing of who may be over-representing a position where they should have been part of the original discussion. And it's just part of our job that we do that.
Councilor LaSae?
So I think what I'm comfortable with, if the motion stands as speakers may not speak twice, and we have to trust that that won't be, won't put us in a position that we have to make a decision during the meeting that you're abusing that. So if each group wants to appoint one person to speak for the 20-minute presentation, you know, that other, the other three minutes per person is available to have others speak, even if they're on the applicant group. So one, each person shall only speak once.
Right.
No, no, no person shall speak twice.
Right.
That's the motion on the table.
Any other comments regarding this motion? Need to vote on this motion? Mayor Pro Tem, you.
Could you just read back the motion we're voting?
So this particular one is speakers may not speak twice.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? So that passes unanimously. So you go back to the original motion. Should I repeat it again? Motion is staff have a five-minute or so presentation, then the applicant and opponents each have 20 minutes, and then three minutes per general population speaker. And the applicant can rebut 1.5 times the speakers that are spoken opposition. And speakers may not speak twice. Mayor Pro Tem, you.
And I believe there's a second staff or a second staff period right before the final rebuttal. Is that correct in our current procedures?
Yes, there is. For staff to address speaker remarks, either in response to council comments or at the conclusion of the speaker's...
Right, so there's, there's a second staff comment period right before the final rebuttal by the applicant.
After public comment then?
Correct.
And then before rebuttal?
Correct.
I don't know, sometimes you're...
The rule says that the mayor or presiding officer can recognize staff comments or questions from the council at the conclusion of each speaker's remarks. And of course, depending on how many people are signed up to speak and kind of other matters on the agenda, the council and mayor, you know, mayor may not want to do that for, you may not find it helpful to hear speaker respond, speaker respond. So the mayor can...
But aren't we just overriding all of that and establishing this instead?
The motions, I think, didn't address that piece of the rule. You could, or certainly the mayor and staff will be...
Is that in another section of the 9.3.1 and 9.2?
It's in 9.3.2. But also, we can, of course, be sensitive to the proceedings and council's desire to hear from others.
Because I guess my point is I would absolutely not want that to happen, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, especially not between speakers and city staff. I would rather see city staff as more impartial and just focusing on facts. And then at the conclusion of all of the individual speakers, make whatever comments they have regarding factual matters, which I presume they would be speaking to. And then there's the final rebuttal following that by the applicant.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I thought that the original motion did have that part about the staff before the final rebuttal by the applicant. But just in case, if we need to, if it doesn't appear that that is the case, then I'll just go ahead and move that we have staff presentation or rebuttal?
No, no, comments.
Comments, okay. Staff comments before the final rebuttal by the applicant.
Second.
This move by Councilor Johnson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Mayhew to add staff comments after the public has finished speaking, three minutes each, and before applicant rebuttal. Any further discussion? All those in favor for that particular addition? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, so it passes. So should we go back to the original motion? We are ready for it. Okay, so we'll start off with the staff. It'll be around, they'll give their presentations, and the applicant and opponents each have 20 minutes. And then there's three minutes for each public speaker. Staff will have comments, and the applicant will provide the rebuttal based on 1.5 minutes times the number of speakers that were opposed. And speakers may not speak twice. Councilor Christensen?
I'm just gonna ask, are we confident, sorry, are we confident that the five minutes will be enough time for staff to address the agreement and make sure that the public knows that we're here to discuss the agreement and not the entire round of proceedings?
I believe so. We can certainly make that clear, the distinction between the two proceedings. There's been some correspondence between staff and Mr. Richard Scheel for the primary opponent group to that point. And he indicated he's aware of that. So we can certainly do that. As I said, otherwise, the primary substantive presentation about what's in the agreement, what it's for, will be this evening, and we wouldn't plan to repeat that on Monday. So that's why I thought our staff presentation would be relatively short Monday.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just, I wonder if it would help with some of the public comment for them to be aware of like the larger pieces of the presentation from this evening. Sorry.
Councilor Witten?
For the record, could we have the opponents identify those people that they are representing and speaking on behalf of? And then, so that also we're not, we're getting back to the spirit of the idea of public comment for those that are not part of the opponent group being allowed to speak once?
We could ask. In past similar proceedings, some citizen groups are reluctant to do that for whatever reason, and they, there is a right generally, if you're a member of a nonprofit group, you don't have to declare your membership publicly. There's some cases going back to the 1960s on that topic. So you could certainly ask, I mean, again, to Councilmember Holloway's point, depend on people's goodwill to...
Please, council, get to understand who deserves the title of adult and not...
Mayor Pro Tem, you.
Yeah, just to clarify, in my motion, I actually did not specify any time limit for the two staff comment periods. There was a side conversation in which I believe you, the mayor, indicated an intention that that shouldn't take more than five minutes. And I thought city attorney concurred with that.
Yeah.
But notwithstanding that, I actually did not mention a time limit for the two staff presentations.
Okay, I agree. So I will change it back to just staff presentation. Councilor Johnson?
All right, and then one last thing on this, just to make sure that all parties would be informed in a timely fashion if we adopt these rules tonight, and that notice would be given to the public also in a timely fashion, so that they are aware.
Certainly, we would communicate with the identified parties, and I'll work with Ms. McCall to get public notice out on the website and otherwise so that those time adjustments and parameters are publicized to the greatest extent that we can. Thank you.
Right, that sounds good. So should we vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, so it passes, this motion passes, and we will make sure that it's published well in advance, so people know about it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, council, and thank you, mayor. So I will, I'll proceed to dive into the details. And before doing that, we'll just recognize so that for the council in the audience, there are representatives from the applicant, Mr. Steve Rimmer from Snoqualmie Mill Ventures, Tom Sarofin, Mac McGinnis. And then online, there are two representatives from the Snoqualmie Community Action Network, Mr. Scheel, who I mentioned earlier, and Lacey Linney. And they both testified their, you'll find their testimony in the record. And then the legal counsel for the applicant, Courtney Kaler, is also online. So now, development agreement, what is it other than its title? It's a specific kind of contract that's provided for in state statute that was adopted around the time of the first set of amendments to the Growth Management Act, RCW 3670B 170 through 210. And it's to allow the council and an applicant to agree on the set of development standards and processes that will govern and vest, to which a development will vest over the lifetime of the project. Vesting is a legal term of art that refers to the fact that at a certain specified point in time, the rules that apply to a land use project are frozen and that subsequently adopted zoning code or other regulations can't affect a vested project. Typically, in Washington, that doesn't happen until the building permit stage. And so it gets complicated for a large master plan process that's going, a project that's gonna be developed over five, 10, 20 years. Often, building permits don't come well into that, and development applicants have to spend significant amount of time and resources developing projects. That would be frustrated if the rules were changed in midstream. And so there was, was an old contractual process that, you know, it's a mouthful that was referred to as like a concomitant zoning agreement or rezone agreement. It just sort of developed organically out of practice. There were some cases that dealt with it. People were unsure about what rules applied to contracts like that. And so as part of the GMA and amendments in 1995, the legislature codified these sections in the statute that said, there's a mechanism and a document called a development agreement. And here, here's how it works and what it should do. And those are the parameters that are specified in the statute. Development agreements have, because Snoqualmie has developed over the last 20, 25 years, largely through big master plan projects, there's a history here of the use of agreements like that for Snoqualmie Ridge Two, or Salish Expansion for the hotel, for example, those are referred to in the record. And so this document that's, that was released earlier this week, and you've got paper copies here, was developed more or less on that template. And so what I plan to do here is to kind of walk through the major components of the document. I'm not gonna read sections, but certainly just sort of help walk you through what's in here. Mr. Rogers is gonna help play Vanna White and scroll through the pieces on screen. I can take questions here, Mr. Rogers can on related pieces, and/or the council, if it wants to deliberate or ask questions of me, you can have a closed session. So that's how we plan to roll through this. So like many contracts, there are some detailed recitals. You've got a page or two of those at the beginning that scroll through some of the history of the project as well as the legal background that I just talked about. And then if you can go to page three, Mr. Rogers, then we talk about where do you find the definitions that are applicable there? You have a section at the beginning pointing you to a section at the end. In section 23, we use initial caps throughout the document to refer to two defined terms. So if you see something that's capitalized or it's multiple words and there's initial caps, you'll know that there's a defined term and there are sections that apply to that specifically. So getting down to the bottom of this page, project description, PCI, and onto the top of the next page, if you will, PCI plan boundaries, lot boundaries, that's talking... That's talking about the boundaries of the project being what they are as shown, they're surveyed, those are the boundaries of the project. They may change. And specifically, there's a, what's referred to as the adjacent property, initial caps. There is a parcel of the mill site that's currently outside city boundaries. It's to the very north and east. It could be annexed. And so this just provides, if it is annexed into the city, that it can be added through a minor amendment. It would like, it's adjacent to planning area two. And so that's not likely to be presented to the city until the planning area is moving forward. But as counsel knows, the council has authority over annexations. And so if it is to be coming into the city, that'll be something that would come for the council, either by initiation of the council or by petition from the property. There, bottom of page four, going over to top of page five, lot boundaries.
One second, we do have a question. Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understood that last point. So the, if this area you referred to was in the future annexed into the city, because of its location, the city council would understand what would happen following that annexation. So the purpose of this part of the agreement just allows that purpose to just then be accomplished administratively.
Through a minor amendment, yeah.
But point is, the councils would in effect be making that decision, they would be clear to them the decision they were making at the time of the annexation choice. So this just causes the procedure to be a little more streamlined once the council makes that decision. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a very good summary. Thank you.
Counselor Naseem.
I guess I need some clarification. Are you saying that this area is not a part of the city of Snoqualmie?
The area that's referred to as the adjacent property, I don't know, Mr. Rogers, are you able to pull up a site, the site map you can show you? It's a, generally small in comparison to the site parcel.
It's the 15 acres.
I'm hesitating.
I'm not sure any specific property is of concern. There are adjacent pieces of property. This allows annexation of those adjacent pieces of property and then subsequent inclusion into this agreement if that is a desire.
There's only one.
I know, but it could be.
So it is referred to as the adjacent property, and it's the one parcel.
The adjacent property, yeah.
Yeah, it's taking a moment to load the graphic, but.
Right, that adjacent property is not currently in planning area one, two, or three, nor part of the property in discussion.
Nor part of the city at all. Correct. I mean, it is historically part of the mill site, and it was in that property that was previously owned, I believe, by a warehouse and conveyed. It just was not part of the entire mill site that was annexed in 2010. Okay.
Counselor Christensen.
Sorry, and so just for clarification, you were saying that the annexation of the property would fall under the minor amendments portion, which is 1.1.
No, the addition of it to modifying the planning area boundary to include that adjacent property as part of the project and governed by then this agreement and the PCI plan, that amendment of the PCI plan boundary could be done by a minor amendment just to add the adjacent property.
Okay, but so then it would not come back to council because it can be approved administratively by the mayor?
Correct. The addition into the planning area would not come in front of council. But annexation is solely the province of the council, so the council would be deciding to bring it into the city or not.
And then it would automatically, or at least go.
Right, wouldn't automatically, but could be done. And that otherwise, the planning area bound, this paragraph goes on to say, otherwise, the planning area boundaries will not be changed other than through a major amendment process, which means going back through either the planning commissioner or hearing examiner as applicable, and then the council. So Mr. Rogers has got the site map on the big screen and is using the hand to point to the SMB part that is outside the city that could potentially be annexed and then added to the PCI plan via minor amendment.
Counselor Naseem.
Just to clarify that.
Then.
And that property is within our UGA?
Correct.
Okay.
So Counselor Watten.
In point of clarification, on that property that is not within the city boundaries, is that included in the current plan's wetlands or not?
It is, I'll defer to Mr. Rogers. I believe the green that you're seeing shows the presence of critical areas. I don't, I can't answer whether or not it's included in that acreage. And I think Mr. Rogers can speak to that. And I'll.
Thank you.
To your question, councilmember, it is, you can see the wetlands in the green up there. That wetland is not included in any of the deviation requests with regard to the buffers. So it's part of the plan, but there are no changes to those wetlands or wetland buffers anticipated at this time.
Good.
Counselor, oh, go ahead. Counselor Johnson.
Are there any residents or other private property owners in that area? Because, okay, my question is, in order to annex in a property, the people who own property there vote on that, right? Isn't that right?
No.
No, okay, that's not how it happens. Okay, so I guess I'm just wondering, why wouldn't we just do it, annex it?
So that property there is owned by Snoqualmie Mill Ventures today. And so a potential annexation request would, so more broadly, there are multiple methods of annexation under the state law. There's a petition method and a voted method. There's also a petition where the council would then take action. There's an error local agreement approach. So there are no residents there to vote, strictly speaking.
Typically, it's only residents of an annexation area that could vote if it went through the voted method. The petition method is then determined by a petition submitted that's signed by the owners of a certain percentage of the property, which then goes to the council to consider if they're, and there's a process for verifying the signatures and the ownership and such.
Counselor Johnson, you can follow up.
Yeah, so then, do the owners not want that presently to be annexed in? And therefore, that's not something we're just working on already?
They've not made that request nor submitted a petition.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Counselor Christensen.
Just, and it sounds like there have been no moves to change a buffers or anything like that, but there's no anticipated environmental impacts of doing it this way, right?
The EIS covers the potential impacts of development of that portion that, which is not within the city today. So while there may be impacts, they are analyzed and mitigations provided for via the EIS.
Okay, no surprises. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
I have just a couple of questions as follow up. So just want to be clear, is there any method by which annexation of that area could occur without requiring council approval?
I don't believe, given that there are no residents in there, can't be any residents that we know of under existing zone even in the county, then any of the other methods would come in front of the council.
So there is a method that potentially exists that would allow it to not come in front of the council?
If there was a voted measure by residents of an annexation area, but there aren't any.
Sorry, so let me make sure I understand that. So if there are residents in an annexation area and they want to join the city, they can vote to join the city and we don't have the ability to say no?
I am going by memory. So, I heard of Mr. Rogers here.
So for annexations, the initial step in an annexation is that they would have to get a certain number of the voters to petition the council to request the opportunity to vote on an annexation. The council's under, you know, similar to the requests that came in five years, six years ago now, the council would be under no obligation to accept that or not. So the council would at least get the initial say of whether they would want to consider or allow the vote, should there be residents or not.
Got it. And then all other methods require explicit action by the council?
Correct.
I had a second question, actually I have three. In the wetlands, I just want to clarify your answer on the wetlands calculations. So in the wetlands variance, if I'm using the right terminology, request, I thought I, or I understood that there were some calculations talking about, there were setbacks, but I thought there was a calculation of sort of the total area sort of before and after. And so when I go back to just sort of make sure I understood that, I just want to understand, is that area that's outside of the city in the totals, is it any way in those calculations? Or do all of those calculations exclude that area that is currently outside of the city?
So specifically, the calculations about the wetland area under the deviation request apply only to planning area one. The applicant has made no request on deviations for wetlands outside of that planning area. So what you see on the map there, and it's actually, it's hard to see, but there's a dash line up on the screen. That is the full extent of the wetland buffer that would be required. And the applicant has not requested any change to that at this time.
Okay, can I have a third follow up?
Yeah.
I want to ask a question that's not too broad and one that you can answer, but generally speaking, without asking you to enumerate every detail, generally speaking, what would be the advantage or disadvantage of the owner of that property asking for that to be annexed? Would they, for example, get, would their taxes change? Would some, you know, significant development regulations change? Like, what would be the reason they might subsequently choose to do that or choose not to do that?
So speaking broadly, the tax, the property tax burden would likely go down slightly because they would not be paying the various King County, for example, the King County road assessment is relatively speaking large. It is much higher than the city's property tax assessment. So there is a slight property tax advantage. As far as development of the property, they would need to develop it in unincorporated King County, they would need to speak with King County about development permits. We don't know what the county would or wouldn't say. They, the applicant has included this property in the EIS and is potentially part of the PCI plan. And so the advantage then is if they were to ask the council to annex it, they could get that approved and could more or less, you know, could more quickly proceed with development of that property under this PCI plan than they could trying to go through the process with the county.
I just have one last follow up.
Okay.
Which is, with this wording that's proposed here, so council approves an annexation hypothetically, would that authority that's then being delegated to staff, would that permit or allow, would that allow for staff then to grant a, waiver's not the word I'm looking for, a deviation with regard to the wetlands? Because I see quite a bit of that is identified as open area. Would that then permit staff to make a deviation, grant a deviation without coming back to council or not?
They would not, or supposedly staff would not be able to do that, that is a council decision.
Okay, so that whatever authority is being asked for here does not include authority to grant such a deviation?
Correct.
Were it to be requested, yeah. Okay, thank you.
There are, just to tag on to that, there are existing processes in the code for buffer averaging and regulation of critical areas. Those would be, they would apply in the normal course to the subsequent development approval steps. I'm going to cover those in a little bit. But those are not a deviation of the scope that is being talked about as part of the PCI.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, more question, no more questions there. So bottom of page four, going to page five, lot boundaries. There are existing lots in the site as a whole that are property tax lot boundaries. This paragraph just says, those lot lines can be adjusted using the existing code processes, lot line, lot boundary adjustment, sometimes referred to as a lot line adjustment, lot consolidation, binding site plan, subdivisions, et cetera, creation of condominiums not really going to be an issue, but without amending the PCI plan. So a lot of the development agreement, these initial sections is distinguishing between what can be done using the normal processes under the code, what requires an amendment of the PCI plan, and if so, an amendment of the plan, is it major or minor? So getting into section six, project approval, and these are where we have, this is fairly lengthy, then going over pages five through into really top of page nine, talk about the PCI plan, require that development of the project be consistent, substantial conformance with the PCI plan, that's section 6.1, describing what the project permit process is. And again, here we have a defined term, development approvals, initial capital D, capital A, and those are outlined in the city code, they're referred to here, they're also defined in section 23, and that those will be also issued in substantial conformance with the PCI plan. So that's 6.2. So then getting into 6.3 and more of the meat of this, this outlines first that they're going to do a lot boundary adjustment to align the existing parcel boundaries with the PCI planning area boundaries. And then specifying that for planning area one, now I'm at the bottom of page six, because there's that level of specificity and the specific site plan that's all been reviewed that, and that there are footprints and lots of the details that are typically encompassed by a binding site or other site plan review process, planning area one can go straight to the more specific development approvals. And then there's a list of those approvals at the, over at the top of page eight. But before getting to that type of, that list of approvals, we talk specifically about the permitted uses. And I think council has been looking at this before. There'd been some conversation in presentations about what's the development? We talk generally about warehousing and manufacturing, light industrial, but what is it specifically? And so there's a description in the permitted uses about, bottom of page six, going over to the top of page seven, to what those uses are planned to be, particularly for the mill street retail commercial section that's, you know, intended to be sort of the heart of activity, pedestrian engagement, citizen engagement with the project. And so that's specified in that section. And in particular, when we are talking about distinguishing between retail sales products, tangible product oriented retail activity, and that's defined in the code, and we cross reference that, that in contrast to retail services that the, we've discussed with the applicant and they've agreed to language that then specifically limits that retail services for the linear street frontage of Mill Street to no more than 10% of that street frontage. And the purpose of that limitation is to try to get at some issues that have arisen in other parts of the city where there's been a change from sort of active retail sales, restaurant engagement to professional offices that some council members have expressed concern that's not really consistent with the overall vision. So that retail services paragraph at the top of page seven is intended to impose some limitations there to address that concern. And if you, just in that, where it's titled retail services, it's really that first sentence that talks about the 10% of linear frontage of the street facing retail that we're talking about. Going on to section seven is the retail, I'm sorry, is the residential component of the project. And again, we're trying to spell out what is that specifically? It's the 160 units that are described in the PCI plan recommended approval, but specifically studios, one, two, and three bedroom units with a max average size of 835 square feet. That average size is the size that was included in the project application as well as would form the bases for the analysis in the EIS. And so that's the reason for that limitation. Now, that's an average size, so if you're talking about the three bedroom. Now, that's an average size, so if you're talking about the three bedroom units, those, there could be some that are larger than 835 feet. Of course, the more that are larger means that others will have to be smaller to come within that cap. And so there was, like many of the components of this agreement, there, you know, there's a trade off between specificity now and flexibility that helps the project be developable and successful. And there's often a tension between those two things that is, you know, batted back and forth between staff and the applicant in the process of arriving at this language. So this, what you see here is an attempt to, to represent both of those concepts. There are some other limitations in this section that staff asked for and have been agreed to. That we, we believe the council would be interested in. One is prohibiting short term rental, short term being defined as a term of less than six months. So no Airbnb, no VRBO, things like that, which have spin off, sometimes traffic or other impacts. And so there's prohibition there. Parking. I think the initial assumption in the design was one space per unit. That's common in other areas of the city and under city code. We've tried to bump that up to correspond to the number of bedrooms. There will be a limitation. There are, there are additional stalls provided in the current design. But question whether you could get to one space for every bedroom without increasing this footprint of the parking area, which would have other stormwater and other impacts. And so there's some language here, again, trying to put a limit on that, that the applicant asked for that said, we'll do a space per bedroom so long as it can be accommodated in the existing footprint. And that's the, the bottom sentence of that sub, subparagraph, small ruminum numero three there on page seven.
Mayor Protemehu.
Just a question regarding that. Is there, I'm trying to understand why that's not mathematically calculable today. Why, you know, because it says, here's the requirement that says, except then you don't have to follow it if it's, if it doesn't work. Like, why wouldn't we know if it worked?
We'd need to know exactly what the bedroom mix is in order to, to determine whether there are sufficient spaces to do one per every bedroom.
And that the rest of the wording is such that that's not really determinable at this point? It'll wait till they actually sort of come up with the actual.
Actual building plan and probably final engineering plan review, where they, they're going to have all of those construction details. Lockdown that, that and or building permit, where they would know what they're.
So if we didn't have that, so, so if we didn't have that out, that would mean they would be forced to modify their building plans potentially by that parking limitation that that might, because there's only a limit how much surface area they're committing to parking, therefore that could actually.
Expand, cause an expansion of the parking or, or.
Or reduction in bedrooms.
Correct.
Got it.
Right. And there are, there is an affordable housing component in the agreement as well, so.
They're kind of bumping against each other.
It is the proverbial, the balloon or the tube of toothpaste you squeeze at one end, it has, it causes impacts at the other, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilor Christensen?
Can we just go back up for then section on page six? It talks about the application of building permits and talks about the design guidelines. It looks as though the design guidelines will be approved by the director. And I thought that when we'd spoken previously, we talked about maybe having that done by council over the planning commission.
I think that this, I'm sorry, I'm going to pause for a moment. This language, and I, thank you for calling that out because I didn't mean to gloss over that. The designs, the concept of having the applicant propose design guidelines and have them approved follows the model of previous development agreements. This doesn't specify how, what level is the council going to approve those? Or is another, or is an individual going to approve those? I think that they, the council in the past has approved design guidelines. This is speaking about, once there is an approved set of design guidelines, what body or person applies them to a project? This is an applicant request to have the application of the guidelines be done administratively consistent with the way it's happened in other places in the city. If council is looking for more specific, excuse me, specificity about who approves the design guidelines, we can certainly address that in this paragraph or elsewhere.
Councilor Johnson is next.
Yeah, another thing on the parking, I believe that our code does have parking requirements for specific commercial uses. I just don't remember if it does for residential uses. So are they supposed to, in our code, have a certain number of spaces for the certain number of bedrooms? And if so, then it sounds like they would need a deviation, but go ahead.
So the, the city's code requires one parking space per multifamily unit without regard to the number of bedrooms. Single family requires two parking spaces per, per house is the requirement. So as to whether this would require deviation or not. You know, this, this provision's in the development agreement. It would be effectively providing more parking than would otherwise be required and therefore would not strictly speaking require deviation. There is, there is an upper limit on, on parking in the code, but this, we wouldn't get close to that.
Councilor Hallway, did you have another comment?
I guess I'm, I'm slightly confused. And let me tell you my confusion. There were specific items discussed that I don't see in here. There were items not discussed, particularly the Airbnb, which I might agree with, which were not discussed. So is this fair game to poke hole? I'm, I, I expected staff to come back with a draft of agreement based on our conversations. This is not what I'm getting. I'm getting a boilerplate with some minor changes in it, but large, the lighting, lighting design agreement was specifically talked about that that would go through the director and based on his recommendation would come back to council. I can't find that in here. Okay, I see 15% listed in affordable housing. We had talked 25, open for discussion. So I'm confused that council input was not taken in the draft of this agreement. Help me.
So council has not deliberated publicly on a development agreement yet, and no draft had been presented. Council has discussed with staff in a closed session, certain items. Staff has met internally and has executive direction. Staff has negotiated with the applicant. And we presented a draft at this point that covered as many details as we could and gave a fair representation of the applicant's desire in the document and staff's. So we haven't heard from the public. We haven't heard from the council in a public meeting following the public hearing. The council will, you'll hear from the applicant. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions, staff. The applicant can answer those and council can ask for more specific things that aren't here or adjusting any of the standards that you see here that you, you might like a different number, for example.
So this is the administration's proposal on a draft PCI agreement, which may or may not take into consideration council guidance.
I wouldn't say that it wouldn't, it doesn't take into consideration.
Unfortunately, it doesn't.
Point of order?
Okay.
Can, can we allow the city attorney to present? And then, you know, we, some of these items, we may want to defer into our executive session.
We can certainly do that.
Point of information. Was the point of order sustained then that we're not allowed to ask questions during this presentation? I didn't understand the point of order.
It is to continue with the presentation and then go into executive or actually closed session to have further detail or conversations regarding it.
That's a point of order.
That would be a motion.
Not a point of order, that's just a question.
Come in.
Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions of council now and to talk in closed session and/or whatever the, the counsel and your, your pleasure is.
All right, Councilor Johnson?
I would wonder if it, it appeared that there was a consensus among council that we desired something, if that is something that would be then required to be in here after those discussions, not having actually had a vote on those things. Or is that something that it could be, well, you know, you talk to the applicant about some of those things and there were points of disagreement? And that this was what was able to be brought forward at this time? Does that, does my question make sense?
Try that again. This document represents the best effort of staff and the applicant to present a, a draft that at this point, the applicant and staff are comfortable with. And that the staff has given due consideration to all kinds of input that we've heard. And just as a reminder, council hasn't deliberated publicly and there haven't been any motions or determinations on, on specific talk points. And as council knows, if you go out and talk to members of the public, you can hear all kinds of feedback. And you might not know on a particular proposal until it goes to a vote on the ballot, whether more than a majority of people support it, just by way of analogy.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Doesn't mean that you don't hear or consider individual members' input before you get to vote.
Councilor Christensen?
I was just going to state that one of the online attendees has raised their hand.
I don't know that this is open for public discussion.
Right, there's no public, no public comment this evening? Moving on.
All right, more questions on that section? No more. All right, I was, I think, going through the residential piece. We're talking about parking. So bottom of page seven, going over to top of page eight is where we are trying to identify with specificity what the next development approval process is going to be. What are the next steps? The applicant is already indicated that's going to do a boundary, seek a boundary line adjustment. That's an administrative process. That's described bottom of page seven, going over the top. Following that, for planning area one, we wouldn't anticipate an additional binding site plan improvement process. Unless the applicant wanted to create more lots than already exist, then they would be required to go through that. So that's called out there. Be then followed up with shoreline substantial development process, final engineering plan review under the Snoqualmie Ridge two development standards. It's a process with which staff are pretty familiar. We are working out some adjustments to those that parks and public works staff particularly would like to see based on what they've learned from Snoqualmie Ridge. A development, things that need, they're fairly technical, you know, nitty gritty, street details, utility line details and so on. We need to collect all of those. There'll be a lengthy attachment for that. Applicant has not seen those. The public hasn't seen those yet, but they're, as I said, they're construction detail level things. But that would be the process here, clear and grade permit process, flood improvement process, all under the city code. There's a process to consolidate those and what, you know, in sort of groups or in one, under the existing code, we cross reference that there. So for that, we're, we're trying to, as much as possible, call out the, the steps in the process, the people and the council can expect to see with reference to those processes that already exist under the city code. Now, bottom of page eight, and so, sorry, this question here.
Mayor Protemehu.
It's a quick point of information. I know I could look it up. BSIP stands for?
Binding Site Improvement Plan.
Thank you.
And it's essentially in, you know, layman's terms, it's a commercial subdivision. It's a terminology that comes out of the state statute. City has a chapter in its code that, that follows that portion of the RCW.
Thank you.
Sure. There's some red lines on, on page eight. And this is to reflect some refinements that, that staff and the applicant have arrived at relating to process for cleanup in the Department of Ecology, which I think is, is reflected in the record and indicated is, is not well-staffed and doesn't necessarily engage in a timeframe that corresponds to development. So I think what, what you see here is trying to speak more specifically to what's called an environmental media management plan that prescribes how you address contamination that may be inadvertently found when you proceed. Since the current indication is that, that contamination, if it exists on planning area one, is below MCA cleanup levels. But there needs to be some assurance that how is, how is construction going to proceed in a way that protects public health and safety if something is found? We anticipate vetting this language a little in more detail with some outside expert assistance in, in the next several days, if not weeks. So we, we may ask the council to consider some additional tweaks to this, but this process here in concept is something that we viewed as a, as an improvement. I think the applicant did as well. And so just wanted to call out, since it changed from the time that we released this to council, the packet is to call it out here. And so it is called out in red line, but more, more to come on that likely. Page nine, section seven, affordable housing. And again, I anticipate from a comment that I've already heard that there will be council feedback on this topic. What you see here corresponds to the standards that were in place in the last development agreement that the council considered like this, the Salish Expansion. 15% of the total number of units at 80% AMI. Some other limitations that staff developed and proposed and sought agreement on are included here as well. The units would be built in the buildings as they are constructed, so on a proportional basis, not build two or three buildings first and wait for the last one and then put all of them. So that's not the way it's going, going to do. And that the affordable units will be distributed across unit type, not all studios and then other non-afford or market rate things. And, but that they'd be distributed across those. And that there'll be some reporting process back to the city so that we can document that, that it is carried forward that way. And that it'll be, the commitment to affordable housing will be memorialized in a covenant that'll be recorded against the property for a duration of at least 50 years. And that rental increases over the time period will match the increases in the AMI in King County. So that's generally what's here again, is I don't want to try to read everything to you and, but, but I am trying to at least capture the major components and take questions on those if you're. And certainly if council wants to indicate preference for different numbers. As part of the public hearing or following, or when they have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, that would probably be a good time to do that. Questions come, Mayor?
Mayor Protemehu?
Yeah, if I could just ask questions about kind of the process that will follow, maybe either city attorney and Mr. Rogers could kind of speak to. I know that we've so far followed a process with the PCI plan? Yes, that we've sort of had a, built a matrix and questions that council members had have sort of been put in there along with responses so that all of the council members can kind of see where those questions and those responses. I find that really helpful. Are we going to use a similar process? So let's just take that discussion a little bit earlier, item seven there, 15%. If, for example, one or more council members thought that number maybe should be a different percent? Would we sort of be capturing that in a similar, like, I'm just sort of wondering what process we plan to use or you'd recommend that we use to sort of try and surface things and sort of drive them to conclusion? What are your thoughts or do you have advice for us?
I, I think this would be a good use for an issue matrix related to the development agreement. Because, excuse me, there are, there are things that are going to be specific to the PCI plan and things that'll be specific to the development. This is, you know, the affordable housing one, for example, is better addressed in the development agreement for various reasons. So I think that is a good way to track it because one, one or more council members may have, you know, something, something they want to identify. There may be different numbers thrown out. It provides a good method for us to keep track of it and provide some level of response to it for the council.
All right, so for example, if one council member thought, hey, that should be 16%. That would be an item that we could send to you. You would track that as some council member thinks that should be 16%. We'd sort of just track that. If another council member thought it should be 14%, that would be another item that you would track. Or like, how, how would you see that working?
That's something we would likely combine into a single. That's something we would likely combine into a single, you know, effectively saying that the, the percentage of housing units that would need to be affordable, you know, it says 15%. We're hearing it one or two, or how many council members are saying, let's make it 16%. Here another one, let's say, they say 14. We as staff could provide some response, you know, with regard to what that may or may not mean, pros and cons for the council's further consideration.
All right. So that, that would be a good method of addressing what I think was brought up earlier of, hey, there's some different things that are, are on different council members' minds. We could just capture that into a matrix that you do for this. Is that kind of your thinking?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Hallaway?
So I disagree. Is this the material that will be presented Monday night? Or will there be changes that we go through tonight to this and that will be presented Monday night? So what is going to be to show to the public on the 12th?
I, I think that's up to the council. We, I think the, our anticipation, walking in here in the absence of feedback from council, was we would present the basics to you. We could have a conversation. We would come back and then the public and the applicant would have an opportunity to speak to this, after which you can then deliberate. I'm trying to remember. There's, it's not a special, a special set on Monday, but there's a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, there, there's a special meeting on, on next Tuesday.
Right.
To, to, for the council to further discuss and deliberate on both the PCI plan and the development, excuse me, development agreement. So our intention was to provide this draft to the council, introduce it to you tonight. The public, of course, has, has been able to see this since this agenda pack went live. They're able to respond to that, you know, provide whatever comments they will to the council at the public hearing on Monday. The council could take that all under advisement as, as you think about, you know, what amendments you may or may not wish to make to this.
So that was our initial thinking. Council could deliberate here in the open. We could have a closed session. You could come out. You could make a motion, ask for changes, ask a direct staff, ask staff to go talk to the applicant about other things. You certainly have some flexibility there. But what Mr. Rogers was just outlining was our anticipation, given the timing, not knowing how, this was released on Tuesday after a holiday weekend, not knowing whether council would be ready or wanting to discuss specifics tonight or the, or whether this was going to be informational and then you would wait to hear from the public. But it's really, it's up to the council.
So I guess in part of what I want to make a motion and you need your advice, which motion it is, either blank that 15% out, that it's still a point of negotiation, or leave the 15% in and strike the height deviation.
That, everything in here, nothing in here is final until the council votes to approve
Understood, but we're going in front of the public on the 12th.
And I would expect to say that. And I've said that to, to the applicant, you know, nothing is agreed until everything agreed. It's like a collective bargaining agreement in that respect. This is what's out. If, so at the moment, this document would be what I would anticipate people preparing to show up and speak to you about on Monday. But you could ask for changes. Would we know whether there are agreed changes or disagreed by Monday? Maybe, maybe not. Depends how many, how complicated, how many conversations we're able to have between Friday and Monday with applicant and their council. So not impossible. We, you know, I certainly spent a fair bit of time on this the last weekend and I'd be prepared to this weekend again. No guarantees in that, that short time period. So it's really, as I said, it's a pleasure to counsel.
Councilor Say?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm kind of in the same category of that. I have a hard time having, you know, presenting this in front of the public for a public comment when it hasn't even been modified or, or council hasn't even had a chance to deliberate it to a point at which it could be, include the elements that council's previously discussed in closed session. I, I don't know. I understand there are varying levels of draft. But I, I fear this is perceived as being something that council has considered when we really haven't. We've only just seen it and only hadn't, we haven't even started talking about it. We're just getting the description. Yet we've set a hearing that the public will see it as being, this is the agreement. Are we going to have another hearing once we have a final development agreement? Or is this it?
I, I think the schedule that has been proposed anticipated that you would get public comment on a document that was not final while it was in draft, so that you could consider the public comment on it and applicant comment on it.
And I've done that.
And, and if, and I'm happy to say it, you know, as loudly as need be, this is a draft council has not reviewed or approved it yet at, at the beginning of Monday. And, you know, the mayor and council can certainly, you know, amplify those comments if, if there's any confusion of, of the public.
Councilor Madden?
Would it be fair to say then that this is, this is an iteration and this is the first round and we are allowing public input on it and we will continue our deliberations until a final draft is brought, final draft? I mean, this is not the final draft that we're looking at. And it's, it's a process of making sure that the public understands it and that they're heard and that's taken into consideration as we move forward. Would that be fair?
I agree. Mayor Proton Mayhew?
Yeah. So I, I have similar comments, but city attorney's comments as well as yours, Mayor, that just made actually help address a lot of my concern. I, I am, I was sort of baffled at the notion that we were having a public hearing on a document we hadn't even seen. But if, if what we're, if we clarify to the public the status of this document, this is early, this is something that's only initially being presented to the council. Because the document, if we go with this document, we don't modify this. If this is the document that we ask for public comment on, I would want us to be very clear. This is a document that the city council has not, has only just seen and has not deliberated. And before we begin our deliberations, we're seeking public comment. We're seeking comments from developer to help us form our debate and form our considerations. As long as we're very clear on that, that addresses the concerns I have. So as long as we're very clear on that in our public noticing, in any press releases we're making in this regard, and then at the beginning of the meeting, then I think my comments are, or my concerns are alleviated. So please, I, I hope there's an agreement that we would do that. I can make a motion if that's helpful, but I, I think that I'm seeing a lot of nodding that that's how we'll do it. So that would address my concerns. And then the implication of that is, my own thought is, as we get towards a final document, I will again want public input. Does that need to be a public hearing? I don't know. But I would at least want to seek some opportunity for public, public input once we have something that's pretty close to final, just because at this point, it's very early on the comments that we'll be getting. But that's what I would hope our process would include. But specifically as to my concerns about Monday, as long as we follow that noticing and announcements at the beginning of the meeting and so on, then I think my concerns are alleviated.
Right. And I would agree because when we set up the agenda and they're voting on the agenda bill, we will have public comment as part of that, as part of the normal process for the final.
Right. I just want to make clear though, sometimes when we do public comment, so for example, we'll take, we'll do a public hearing on the city's budget late in the year. Usually that happens at a time that it's pretty well-developed. So the public may not understand, wait a minute, what, is this the council's proposal that I'm commenting on? Or is this something that is actually only just get, like, I think their understanding of the stage is very important because it will inform their comments.
Right.
And perhaps inform, I'll just leave it at that. I think it will inform their comments and I, I would like to inform them so that that's, those are more helpful comments to
But, but to use your analogy, when the budget's presented, the statute requires a public hearing on the budget and on the proposed property tax levy at a point that's relatively early in the process. And then the council may deliberate, may direct some changes and it comes back before you once or twice. And that even the final meeting in December, there's a public comment period at that point that the budget's pretty, you don't have typically another public hearing that late, but people can get up and comment on that.
I'm worried we're not connecting.
You could do that same thing here, which is you have a public hearing early on the development agreement on Monday. You hear, hear from, and we'll make very clear, it is a draft. Council has not approved.
That, that's the point. Council is not, not, it's not that council hasn't approved it.
Not reviewed.
Council's not even.
Not deliberated on it.
Not deliberated on it.
Right.
This is a proposal, an initial proposal for the council to consider. We want to make, that's the point. And we're seeking public input as well as input from the developer as we begin that process. That, that's what I think we must make clear so they understand the stage they're in and don't, don't misunderstand and therefore their comments are calibrated in that way.
And then if council so chooses, you can allow other opportunities for public input. You're not required, there's, there is a requirement for a public hearing. Monday's hearing meets that requirement. You could take public comment during the normal course as the mayor indicated, or you could create a separate slot. You could have another public hearing if you so chose. But, but this is the one that's required. And as you described, it's, we can make clear how early in the process and where this stands, where the hearing is vis a vis council's review of the document.
Fantastic. That would address my concern.
Great. Thank you. Mayor, or Councilor Hallaway?
So I am still uncomfortable setting expectations. So I move that the mark of 15% be replaced with either two dash lines in a percentage or two Xs in percentage. It's a double-digit percentage yet to be decided. And administration can advise 15% is normal as we, as we've done prior PCI. But I don't want to set expectations in public, meaning that that were somewhere focused around that meeting because I don't think we've had those discussions. So I motion to replace 15% with XX%.
Second, this motion by Councilor Hallaway and second by Councilor Christensen to remove the 15% and just put dashes or Xs to leave that open.
Somewhere between 10 and.
99.
99.
I wasn't gonna, it's not gonna be anywhere near.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
Point of clarification, then. I assume the wording that also says in words, 15% would be stricken.
That could be long dashes. Yes.
Yeah, long dashes.
Okay.
We will do that. Thank you.
Good cut. Sorry.
Any, any discussion regarding that? Okay. Seeing none? All is a favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? It's passed unanimously. So we remove the 15% and leave that open for, to fill in. So, so council, we've been sitting here for an hour and 40 minutes. Do you, does anyone need a five-minute break? I do see we need a five-minute break. So why don't we, if we can pause the video for five minutes and we will come back at 7:48.
Thank you for the recording. We are, we have returned. It is 7:51. We will continue with the review of the development agreement or overview.
Thank you, Mayor. We were on affordable housing. Just wanted to, I thought we had concluded on that topic. Just wanted to check before I move on. Were there more questions? Now seeing none. Okay. Section eight, bottom of page nine, going over top of page 10, the environmental review process. There's plenty of citation to statute and processes here, generally speaking, for the council's benefit. This just outlines that we will follow a standard SEPA process as the development agreement applications come in, sorry, development approvals come in. There's a checklist. The law says if there's an existing EIS, we have to use it for the same process. But then there's an opportunity with those to determine, is that enough? Have there been changes? Are there, is there additional information? Can we issue a SEPA addendum and address those, that additional analysis that way? Are there, is there significant new impacts, new information about impacts such that a supplemental EIS would be required? There's a decision point here and this is just outlining that process. It's fairly standard. There's even some guidance from the appellate court as recent as a couple of weeks ago that just reaffirms that that's what the process is and that's what this paragraph is trying to encompass. Page 10 vested rights. Paragraph 9.1 specifies the development regulations to which the project will be vested for the term of this agreement, which is 20 years absent extension by the council. And it lists all the various provisions. Importantly, and I'll get to the deviations in a second. So the developments regulations to which the project is vested are on page 10 and 9.1. There are exemptions, important ones to that list, things that can change once the project gets underway and that those changes would apply to the project. Those are set forth on page 11 in paragraph 9.3. And those generally speaking are limited to fees, water sewer rates, connection charges, permit application review fees, impact fees, taxes, things like that. Procedural.
Let me finish that section.
Okay. So procedural things like processes, the SEPA review authority, ability to provide that. Bottom of the page, things that are cities required to change by direction of state or federal law. With the exception of the city shoreline master program, which is in city code and which would govern. And then like the design guidelines, things, things of that nature. There is a requirement of the statute that says, this is in sub-paragraph F, if there's anything that the city adopts that's necessary to, to address an immediate threat to public health or safety, the statute says that there has to be an exemption to vesting and that that's in sub-paragraph F. So that's there. So that's generally what you've got here. Also, the state building code, you know, every couple of years, the council adopts revisions to the state and international building code. Those were commanded to do that by state law. It's, those are the codes adopted by this, the building code council. And council member will say is probably the most familiar with, more, more familiar than he would like to be. So there's an exemption for, for that as well. Council member Hallaway.
Councilor Hallaway?
Thank you, Chuck. 9.2, I, I see the, the specific SMCs in which deviations are required. And I, but I, I get what, what problem is, it says, these are the, SMCs are being required deviations, doesn't specify out except for some of them, what the deviations are. In particular, we do say no conditional use permit for second-story use. We do say deviations on road utilities and trails, but don't specify what deviations are being granted.
Those are in the PCI plan approval. And so what this paragraph, purpose of this sub, sub 9.2 is to say there are deviations approved associated with the project and those deviations apply and the project is vested to them for the term of, of the project. And it refers to them generally because the specifics of those deviations are set forth at some length in the PCI plan, the recommended conditions. And they will be in the, the resolution that will be given to the council if, if you choose to approve the project. They'll be there. This is a, more or less a cross-reference and saying that those things, those deviations which are approved separately are included in the regulations to which the project is vested. And that's a mouthful of jargon and I apologize, but.
Councilor Say?
Yeah, I just want to, exemptions from vested development regulations. And the vested, the vested development regulations are 9.1. And I'm trying to get a handle on, either we're specific in the 9.1 that these are the things you're vested from. And 9.3 would be all of these things and any other items not listed in 9.1. I'd, I'd like to see that, that a little more clear. And so there's no in-between. These, these are the very specific development regulations in 9.1 that you're vested on by this agreement. And here are things that are exemptions, but there are, the, it's the ones you don't know. Where do they fall? If, if they're not listed in 9.1, they're not listed in 9.3, are you vested or not vested? And, and I would fall towards the, if it's not listed in 9.1, it's, it doesn't apply. So 9.3 should say something of, and all others items not addressed in 9.1. So that's something I can see a lot in my work. You gotta be, gotta pick one or the other. You don't get kind of fall in between.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
So just a question to make sure I understand. I'm looking in 9.3 out. It's sort of a two-part question. It's only one question. I'm looking in 9.3 out, it's sort of a two-part question, but it's only one question. If I look at I, 9.3I speaks to taxes of any nature of general applicability. It doesn't say taxes or fees of any nature. I'm wondering, is that intentional? And so then I started looking backwards, fees somewhere else. Item 9.3B talks about with respect to utilities. It says monthly service charge. Is that, is that the technical term for the bill I pay every month?
The rates.
Okay.
Correct.
So then with respect to this notion of fees, certain fees are called out, impact fees, for example, in D. But what, I'm just wondering, should there be or is there some reason--
Permit fee, permit review fees, for example.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple of specific call-outs, yep. But with regard to other fees, so with respect to item I, which seems to sort of say anything is generally applicable, except it says taxes generally applicable. Is there a reason that it doesn't say taxes or fees of any nature? Is it like--
Other than we know that there are specific fees that apply and that during the development process. And so we tried to call those out with specificity where we're aware of them.
Got it.
But that would be an area that, that some I where similar to council member LaSae's comment, council could loop in other generally applicable fees if there are any.
Well, maybe in the intervening period, Saul captures and bring up later during deliberations. But maybe you could consider whether, so you could advise us in due course as to whether taxes or fees would be a fine thing to put there or that there would be actually some substantive change that that would be, would represent. So it's just, it's me without--
In general, and it took a decade or so of litigation to hash it out. Typically, under general vesting law, not outside of a development agreement, you don't vest to fee rates. You don't vest to impact fee rates. And so that's part of--
But basically, you don't have to say because it's not really--
But there's, you could certainly, if you wanted to add it, that would be an appropriate place to do it.
Councilor LaSae?
On item J, it indicates additional design guidelines to be prepared by owner and reviewed and approved by the council, by the city prior to the BSIP. Is that meant to be council?
In the definition, city means the city.
Right, and I think there's, there was a reference to this, the concept in section six, and I think council member Christensen asked about it. And as I indicated then, it spoke to approval by the city. That was not an area yet where there was staff and applicant agreement as to precisely who at the city. And that may be something, a topic on which the council wants to provide more specific input.
Because it can't stay the city. Because by definition, the city is--
But for purposes of vesting, this is, this is saying the subsequently approved design guidelines are going to apply and they're not vested to the fact that there aren't design guidelines yet. That's what this is trying to say here. But the process for in body, or person who approves the design guidelines isn't called out with great specificity in agreement. And as I said, council can provide input on that.
Just bringing up, as we had kind of discussed earlier, items that can be added to that list or parking lot or matrix, or however we want to call it, of items to address going forward.
Okay. Going on. Paragraph 10 term, as I mentioned, it's 20 years. It can be approved, or I'm sorry, it could be extended, subject to approval by the council and the mayor in the same fashion that this agreement is. Because this is linked to the PCI plan, and it has been a practice in the past. If you extend one, you want to extend the other so that they match and one doesn't have a longer or shorter term and then create conflicts. And so there's some language at the bottom of that paragraph that says if we extend the agreement, PCI plan goes with it essentially. I think council, I don't know if he's just, if he's writing a note or had a question.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
So I just want to make sure that I understood the point you were just making. I'm thinking about section seven, which was the affordable housing topic. And it talks about the-- get the right term here, the covenant, was that the word?
Correct.
And so that's, there we go, rental covenant against, shall record against the property, a covenant to this effect of whatever ends up being in that section.
Right.
That's there because the term there is 50 years, whereas the term of this agreement is 20 years. These are sort of related to each other and that's so that that then attaches to the property and it's there regardless of what--
Correct.
Happens with this agreement subsequently.
Correct.
Got it.
And because there, this will be recorded, the development agreement will be recorded against the property. Generally, as the property is developed, portions may be leased separately or sold or possibly condominiumized, although it's rental housing. And so you want to make sure that the specific limitations related to affordability in the residential piece will be there and run for that, for the duration that council has specified.
Got it, thank you.
Councilor LaSae?
I guess it's just a general question. Is 20 years sufficient to complete areas one, two, and three? I mean, I look at SR1, SR2. This is a significant project, similar to those being significant projects, and they took that longer than that.
And SR2 was extended specifically on a request by the applicant and approval of an amendment by council. And so, so here's a perfect example of the kinds of trade-offs. So if you, if the project is vested for 20 years, that means it's, the development's protected against code changes for that time period. The longer you like the term, the longer the vesting runs. And so council could decide with the applicant, the agreed term of that, this process then allows you to address extensions, you know, on a case-by-case mutual agreement basis as needed. So there's some flexibility built into how it's drafted now. However, yes, you could certainly look at challenges and think about what might happen in the market and are we, are we headed for a crash? And what's going to, how is it going to affect the development market? And council could say perhaps a longer term is warranted right now. Certainly, that's a matter for council and the applicant.
Councilor Watten?
Just a point of clarification. What we're doing right now is we're just being walked through the development agreement. And I guess my word of caution is, because our attorney has stepped away from his role over there, is deliberations would probably be best in closed session. Is that correct?
Certainly, if the council's interested in confidential legal advice, that's a better environment for it.
Councilor LaSae?
Yeah, I just remind my fellow council member that council does not make decisions in closed session. Council provides advice and guidance in open session. So deliberations are absolutely done in open session.
Council has the option to deliberate because it's quasi-judicial, closed session or open. Again, trade-offs there about confidentiality and you're negotiating in part with another party to a contract. So there are benefits to the confidentiality and there are public interest and transparency values at stake when you think about what you want to say in open session as well. So it's a balance.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask another question. I'm thinking about another development agreement that existed between the city and a developer that had a time period, I don't know if it was 20 years, perhaps it was 10, I can't recall. And then nothing happened under that development period, or under that development agreement for a long period. In fact, possibly it was extended, I don't remember the details. But what that time period does is it's a trigger that says, hey, we're going to have to have another discussion if this is going to go beyond that. And then that would happen at that time. So--
Correct.
There's, and I think perhaps this is what you were trying to point out, there's trade-offs. There's, you go longer periods that has these pros and cons and shorter periods has these pros and cons. And this is one of the things that a developer and a city can contemplate an agreement like this might sort of negotiate to resolution on. Is that, is that right?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Councilor Watten, were you wishing very closed session or?
I think it's probably in our best interest to get through this as quickly as possible and then we can move on to closed session.
Okay, so I'll try to go a little faster then and see how we do. Page 12 going over to 13.
Mayor?
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
I kind of have a little bit different view. I'd like us to just understand the agreement and I don't see any need to rush that. And I think there's nothing wrong with understanding an agreement, doing that in public. I don't see any downside to that. So I wouldn't encourage the attorney, city attorney to go faster. I think let's, let's make sure we understand it. Now, I think perhaps if the ideas, before we enter into debate, we may want to decide whether we're doing that in open and closed. But I think just understanding the document, which is what I think I'm certainly trying to do right now. I wouldn't encourage the city attorney to go any faster.
Okay. I'll proceed and adjust accordingly. Section 11, bottom of page 12 going over to the top. This is the major and minor amendment process that I referred to previously. It is a model that has been in other city development agreements that the council has approved. The parameters for who decides a minor amendment are set out in that 11.1. And slight wrinkle on some past practice here. It is approved administratively by the mayor or director if designated by the mayor. With the concurrent, and this part is similar to past practice, with the concurrence of the chair of the council CD committee. Subject to certain limitations, such as a minor amendment is approvable only if it doesn't result in an increase in square footage of any particular use by more than 10%. And just recall, PCI plan specifies certain max square footages for warehousing, manufacturing, light industrial, restaurant, residential. And so those are the uses that this limitation is speaking to. Things that comply with applicable development regulations, things that don't significantly increase the environmental impacts unless the impacts are mitigated. So, and again, there's a cross-reference here to the adjacent property that we talked about at the very beginning that could potentially be added by annexation. Anything that's not made minor is major. And the major process is the same process by which the PCI plan came to council in the first place. And there's a limitation to only the, if it's Noqualmie Mill Ventures still an owner of a portion of the property, then that's the party that can seek an amendment, not a lessee or, you know, a proposed purchaser of some component of it.
So we do have a question or a comment. Councilor Johnson?
That's just a general summary that, and questions are welcome.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I think that it's clear, but I just want to make sure. So they couldn't, under 11.1, yeah, they can't say increase the size of a building by 10% and go, oh, well, I guess that's the new baseline. I'll increase it by another 10% and keep going, right? It's 10% from the PCI plan as originally done. They can't like leapfrog.
So it's not the building, but the use.
Okay, the use.
Right, so it would depend on where they are vis a vis the square footages. I mean, they may change the number of buildings because they make smaller buildings and there's one more in that location. Or maybe they only build two instead of three. But we're talking about the overall uses and that mix of uses. Since the plan, the PCI plan is designed to achieve a mix of uses that are beneficial to the city, that they're not going to make one significantly greater and another significantly smaller. It's, that's what the 10% limit is speaking to.
So if they made a change, it would go back to, I'm sorry, mayor.
You can.
All right, thank you. So it would go back to the original PCI plan. They can't say, oh, 10% is the new baseline. Or that new 10% increase is the new baseline and then increase another 10%.
Right, it's--
Okay.
The PCI plan is the baseline.
Thank you. Councilor LaSae?
Yeah, I want to make sure how this applies to something that's earlier in the document. If the, you referred to that it doesn't result in an increase of square footage of any use approved by the PCI plan or greater. But you referenced what's allowed in the PCI plan. Because there are uses that they're asking for deviations to provide that are not allowed in the PCI plan. Are those uses also limited to the same restriction?
So all of the uses are, that are in the plan are approved by the plan. And the deviation as to some of those uses is the, is the process of future development. All of those uses are allowed outright. And there's, I think, a little bit maybe of confusion in the document about what the deviation is from. It's not, they're allowed only by deviation. The residential uses, the restaurant, retail, those are all allowed. It's just whether they're subject to this additional, on top of the PCI plan, CUP process that the deviation is, is getting at. And so, but for example, the restaurant, I believe the restaurant, I'll look at Mr. Rogers, restaurant, retail, or sorry, restaurant uses have a square footage in the PCI plan? Thank you.
So you can see on the screen, this is the chart that's in the application for the PCI plan that lays out, here's the square footage that is proposed for the different uses. So under this provision, the 10%, if the applicant wished to provide 77,000 square feet of retail and restaurant uses, that would be acceptable as a minor amendment. Now, they'd have to take that 7,000 square feet from somewhere else. But if they, to Councilor Johnson's question, they couldn't then say, oh, now the baseline's 77. We can do another 10% to, you know, 85,000. You know, that would not be okay because this chart is static. This is what the council is going to approve, would approve.
Mayor, I have a follow-up then, kind of on that same line. Because as it relates to the minor amendment versus major amendment, this, section 6.3B, single I and double I indicate that certain things are already determined as a minor amendment and/or major amendment. And I think that's, that's something that I'd like to ask about at a point where I've digested all of this, that why, why uses that are being asked to be increased and/or added are under the minor amendment section, not major amendment section? I'm just, I'm curious as to, maybe it's jumping back a little bit, why all of the uses essentially of the entire site are being listed as, and if there's a change to them as a minor amendment as opposed to the, why is the retail services so much more important when it's such a smaller portion of the uses of the site?
So the reason for the minor amendment adjustment process that's referred to in 6.3B, small Roman numeral one, is because the limitations there to specific types of light industrial manufacturing, wine, beer, spirits, manufacturing, production, so things that have been talked about. But the PCI plan doesn't actually propose or limit to those. So the development agreement by, by sort of tightening the focus to say, these are the uses that the applicant has talked about. Let's say, put here a requirement, that's what they're going to build, absent a change. And then there was some conversation back and forth about market conditions and flexibility and that trade-off. And that's where that conversation landed in terms of the willingness to agree to a more specific list of uses in this document than was shown on that chart, but retaining some flexibility to change those. And that's where this wound up. Again, subject to council review here tonight and later in deliberation and input. The tightening of the process for the 10% of linear frontage along Mill Street, staff proposed that to be major, given some of past council comments about changes to those and the importance of that limitation coming out of the city's experience elsewhere, particularly the neighborhood center. That, you know, in the absence of that past experience, that might have been something else that, you know, to others might have seemed like 10% is reasonable, but maybe let's have that be changeable by minor amendment. I think given staff's experience, the prior iterations-- I think given staff's experience, the prior iterations we asked for, and the applicant thought it was appropriate to make that major. So, okay, so a lot in answer to your question, but that's how those, we wind up.
Roundabout way you got there, so to speak.
All right. Any other questions on the major, minor sections? All right. Going on, the next set of sections relate to specific components of the project, open space, and improvements, utilities, water, sewer, stormwater, internal roads. Many of these sections just track what's in the PCI plan. There's some general language in all of these about who's going to own the improvements and the open space after development. And some, I will describe flexible language that the applicant originally proposed, I think, thinking of the way the city has handled many other developments, that these things will be built in open space and utilities will be dedicated to the city. This is a different site in that it's a large site, and many of those things will be internal to the site, and often in commercial properties, internal utilities the city does not take ownership of. On the other hand, other things like stormwater, stormwater comes off the site, becomes part of the city system. The city operates under the ecology and PDES permit program. We have to inventory and inspect outfalls, so there are trade-offs there. Dedication comes more, with dedication can come more control. So the language generally speaks to, those details are better worked out when we have an actual hard final engineering plan in hand. We can see what, where things are going to be, whether it works or not. So a lot of the language says, we'll come to the city by dedication if the city accepts it, and the determination will be made at a future point in time. And you'll see that concept repeated in a number of these. For open space, their proposal is that this, and some of the stormwater facilities are located in open space, and the applicant's proposal is that the city would take those. And then we began a conversation about what specifically, which parts, I think this afternoon we got a, we said we would need to see a map. Everyone agreed. Their engineers produced a map, a proposed map, which we received just today. So that, for open space, this will be a bit of a fluid. We would bring the council, you know, in more fully baked language and possible additional exhibit there. That's in that section 12.
Representative Mayhew?
Just a question about that open space. In the initial sentence, there's a calculation of 64% of the overall site that will be open space.
Right.
Back to my question earlier tonight, just want to confirm that 64%, the 166 acres, the calculations behind that all exclude that area that is not currently annexed?
I'll look to Mr. Rogers again. I believe it does not include the adjacent property, but Mr. Rogers may be able to confirm that.
I'm quickly looking at the footnotes here under this table. You'll see at the bottom, and I will apologize for it being such tiny text, that it says the total area, the last one at the bottom, the total area of the development plan and planning area 2 include 15.7 acres that are located in unincorporated King County. It notes of the 15.7 acres, 12 of them are identified as open space, and four would be developed for warehouse uses. So that would be included in that total calculation.
So what this is saying, little 6 there is actually, before planning area 2 were to be developed, there would be an annexation?
They could develop.
It says will be. That's, I think the lawyer tells us that means must.
That is what the footnote says, yes. That is what, so that is what the application is presuming as to what the council could, would actually approve via, in the PCI plan. The council would not necessarily need to follow through on that. The council could leave it as an option.
Okay, but with respect to my question, then the 64% does in fact include that currently unannexed portion?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilor Lozey?
I want to just get a clarification on 13.1 on the Mill Pond Road. I'm trying to understand the Mill Pond Road extension as a private road, and I'm trying to, trying to, I don't see that designated in SP-3. I'm trying to understand what part of that road extension is intended to be private.
So that, yeah, the reference to those plan sheets is talking about the road standards to which it will be designed and what it will look like. That's that reference. So SP3 doesn't show the proposed extent of dedication. That's in the exhibit that we just received today. The proposal, so, and again, just a proposal, is it doesn't include the private portion of Mill Street. It stops, the proposed dedication line is the edge of the roundabout, and includes essentially the roundabout, the relocated Mill Pond Road, and the portion of the site that's between the relocated Mill Pond Road and the existing Mill Pond Road. So maybe Jason can, if you have a clicker or?
I guess, so let me continue to add to that, Jason, before you describe it, because I want to make sure. I understand it is, because when I hear you say that, it tells me that the proposal is that all the portions of Mill Pond Road that are on the property are private road?
No, no, sorry. There's Mill Street and Mill Pond Road, which creates some confusion here. And Jason, so?
So I'm only looking at Mill Pond Road. I'm not looking at Mill Street.
Right.
So what it's saying is the existing Mill Pond Road today runs on the westerly edge of the site, so it's located here. This is the right-of-way that exists today. The applicant is, would construct this new portion of Mill Pond Road that would curve inward slightly, easterly slightly, and then construct the roundabout, and then it would swing back to the west and rejoin the existing right-of-way today. So what it's saying is this, this portion here, this new portion and the roundabout would be dedicated as a public road, and then from roughly here, give or take, this Mill Street would remain a private road.
Because I'm reading, the last sentence of 13.1 says, "The Mill Pond Road extension will be a private road designated to the road standards described and depicted in the PCI plan pages, blah, 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 and PCI plan sheet SP3." What is the Mill Pond Road extension?
I believe they, that should be a reference to Mill Street, which doesn't exist yet. That's the colloquial name that's been given it, but would be, we're talking about, from the roundabout across planning area 1, is what they contemplate as would be a private road built to the standards that are on those plan sheets.
Councilor Walton?
So, point of clarification, it's not Mill Pond Road, it's Mill Pond Road Extension, because we really don't know what the name is yet.
Says Mill Street.
No, Mill Street.
Says Mill Street on the, right, on some of the application sheets. And we should define that in the document, I believe, based on the conversation we're having right now.
Representative Mayhew?
So the way I read this paragraph is not the same as what you just said. So I just want to ask, are you sure? Because what it says in the preceding sentence is, first it talks about the relocation of Mill Pond Road, it talks about granting a right-of-way with respect to that. Then it talks about planning area 3, and it says, "Before planning 3 area happens, an extension of the road would be built." And I thought my reading was that this extension of the road connected to planning area 3 is what is in fact being referred to as the Mill Pond Road Extension. So I just wanted to be sure, I wanted you to be sure that you think this refers to Mill Street, because that wasn't my reading.
I see what you're getting at, so, yes. This white area here you see is the road in question. It would connect from today's Mill Pond Road here with an as-yet-undefined intersection, connect through to planning, to the developable portion of planning area 3. That is the Mill Pond Road Extension.
And that, we stand corrected, first of all. Second of all, Mill Street would also be a private road.
Councilor Johnson?
The Mill Pond Road Extension does not currently have a name colloquially or otherwise.
We could call it Johnson Avenue if you'd like.
So moved.
And it dead-ends at Johnson Falls.
It does. Okay, thank you. Now I'm understanding what that meant.
All right, there are, back to, maybe going on to page 14. There are some provisions in the document for additional mitigation. Some of those flow from PCI plan proposed conditions that, let's say, applicant contribution to certain things shall be a pro-rata share outlined in the development. Some of those are specified here, like the proposed contribution towards the cost of a full traffic signal at Fisher and Parkway intersection. That cost split of 14% is based on the traffic impact analysis and the number of trips indicated that generated by the project flowing through the intersection. And I'm sure that applicants can speak to that in a public hearing, or, and/or staff can confirm with the city's traffic experts if there are any questions there. There are other places here where we have continued conversations about the amount of the pro-rata share contribution, which will bring additional detail to the council. For example, this cost split on water line looping, which is a water main loop coming from the project site under the river connecting to historic downtown, that's a planning area 2 and 3, a determination. So that's, again, one where it's hard to get solid information now about what the benefit to the city would be versus applicant and what the exact pro-rata share contribution. So we're trying to arrive at good language. I think there's another place where there's language for a contribution for the, towards the ladder truck. That's likely, again, we're trying to run that to ground, so to speak, but going to be based on the number of buildings over a certain height that would be primarily served by a ladder truck. So there'll be more information coming there, but that's what you see in those various sections. Jason, if you can go on to 17, if I may, or unless there are questions, sure.
I need to probably take a severe deviation, but it seems to be the only place.
That's for Halloween.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Chair. Are there still existing water rights associated with the property?
No.
There are not?
I don't believe so. I can confirm that.
If there are, and we would want to get in discussion of transference of those rights to the cities, this would be the document?
This would be a good place, right. There was a water right.
There was a surface water right, one, yeah.
Related to Tocal Creek, which was owned by a warehouser, was not owned by Snoqualmie Mill Ventures, and this is a number of years ago, but there was some consideration by council and the city about acquiring that, but it was later sold with the assistance of an ecology grant to a downstream ag group in Snoqualmie Valley, and that's been since transferred.
Okay.
Councilor Lozey?
I'm sorry, I want to go back to section 13 real quick. I'm not seeing, there were a number of deviations from the standards. If I recall, a table that indicated, or sort of indicated which roads would have different standards and such, and I'm not, I'm not clear on how that's applicable in the way this is worded and constructed in terms of the transportation for the Mill Pond Road, the hall road, and internal roads.
The deviation, I think we covered that in an earlier section. We could certainly add a cross-reference to this section that says, built to these standards subject to the deviations approved.
Well, the deviations are just saying there's road deviations. It doesn't tell me what they are when I look back at the?
Deviations are identified in the PCI plan. Right, so the section we talked about previously was in the vesting in section 9, which was just cross-referencing those and saying that the project was also vested to the deviations for the life of the project that are approved as part of PCI plan approval. But those are approved as part of PCI plan if the council does approve. So they're not identified separately in this document.
So just so I'm clear, then, approval of the wording as is means approval of all the deviations requested for the roadway constructions?
Well, approval of a PCI plan deviations would include that. We could certainly add, if you wanted clarity here, that they're going to build to these standards that are identified, subject to the deviations, so that there's clarity.
So we would have, we would need to?
Do that.
There's two routes, I guess. We could either specify the deviations that are approved in the development agreement, or we negotiate those deviations in the PCI plan and let the development agreement just reference the approved PCI plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilor Johnson?
Thanks. I think I'll actually hold my comment until we're deliberating about things.
More questions? All right. Page 17, maybe, Jason? Oh, yeah, sorry, there's, we've got it perfectly, 16 going over to 17. So this fiscal mitigation payment section is drawn from Salish Expansion and just likely wouldn't be applicable, but could be if the property was transferred to an entity that could seek a property tax exemption. And so it speaks to that potential and payment in lieu in that process.
So Representative Mayhew?
Yeah, sorry, I had a question back in section 14 on page 15. In 14, 14.2, I guess I'll have to study this, try and figure out what this says. Does this say we're giving them back their utility fee? I don't, what is this, what is the meaning of, like, generally, what does this mean? It seems very technical. I'm not getting it at first read.
In 14.2?
Yeah. Seems to say they used, they've already paid us a bunch of things, so is it saying we're going to give it back, or what is it saying?
No, no. It is, there's been conversation in the past about the appropriate scope of the use of stormwater fee. This is cross-referencing.
Stormwater, is the fee means the monthly fee?
It is the monthly fee.
It's not the connection charges or anything of that nature?
Connection charges, right. No, it's a monthly fee that's assessed based on the amount of impervious surface area of property. In a large site, most of it is compacted, and so therefore qualifies as impervious surface even though it's not paved. And so the fees assessed on, I believe, a per acre or per half acre basis of impervious. So you can imagine a large site generates a fairly substantial fee. There's been conversation in the past about what are the limitations and how should the fee be used? And so there was some conversation that, around this, and we wound up with just general language that mirrors that in the city code that says, "The city will use the fee for these, for its use of, it's an enterprise fund for the management, planning, design, maintenance of the city's stormwater system." There are those provisions elsewhere. We talked about where the applicant has proposed dedicating certain facilities, at least as it currently stands, they have proposed dedicating the relocated Mill Pond Road, the circle, the stormwater outfall after construction to the city. Johnson Falls. And so that would be a part of this, then, if accepted, would be part of the city system that we would use the stormwater fee in part for inspection, maintenance, operation of that.
All right, so this, in summary, is just, because it has a past tense reference, so it says, there's fees, we collect them, we have collected them, we're going to use them for essentially the purpose we collect them for.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
So most of then the provisions following the fiscal mitigation that I just talked about are what you non-lawyers would refer to as boilerplate. I'm happy to take any questions. I don't think you want me to walk through all of them, but they are laid out in pages 17, 18. You were right there. Paragraph, section 21.13, this is an indemnification provision. Typical for, for contracts, often there are mutual ones. In this case, this is a, what we would refer to as a one-way in which the owner agrees to defend and indemnify the city against certain things, anything essentially arising out of the agreement. Subsequent development approvals and as well as anything that arises out of the presence, release, et cetera, of hazardous substances on the property. And the breadth of that is important in the context of the history of the site as well as the potential for proposed dedications or portions onto the city. So I just wanted to note that that, that that's there.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
Sorry, I seem to be running consistently one section behind you. Back in section 18, so am I correct in understanding this basically sets up, addresses some of the prerequisites that would be needed to facilitate the, the state's pilt process were that ever to come to, to apply? And it's just sort of some procedural things around making sure that would, would sort of work the way that that pilt process is written in state law? Is that correct?
Yes, and it provides for an additional payment to the city in addition to the pilt.
Got it.
And it's really in 18.3, about four or five lines down that you would see sort of towards the right-hand margin. In addition to the pilt, there would be a fee for services for these, towards the other city general fund services and a process for determining the amount of that.
And that would be an annual, that's not a one-time, that would be an annual?
Correct.
And this is something that is permitted under state law relative to pilt process and so forth?
Correct. And, and it is drawn from essentially a mirror provision in the Salish Expansion Agreement.
Okay, and the, so this is similar to what was in that, you're saying?
Correct.
Got it. And then, but there's nothing here that would prevent a tribe from acquiring this? It's just sort of some facilitation language if, if such a thing were to occur? And then if we were going to go into a pilt?
Correct.
Process, it lays out some requirements in that regard, which we don't feel are onerous because they're similar to what we've done previously?
Correct.
Thank you. And, and sorry, just to be clear, it's similar to what we've done differently when negotiating with a tribal owner?
Correct.
Thank you.
In a past development agreement, in exactly this context related to a PCI plan approval.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, back to what you were just discussing on 21.13. To my non-legalese reading eyes, I'm struggling to understand it exactly what it's trying to say in fairly plain language. Is it saying that, I don't know? Yeah, if you could just go through it one more time, what it's saying?
Sure.
Thank you.
It says that the owner will defend, indemnify and hold harmless. That's the, the boilerplate language, but, and that refers to defend against a, a list of things that might happen, claims, causes of action, fees, penalties, et cetera. So defend, city gets sued, the city is assessed a fee, a penalty. The owner will defend, the city tenders defense of that like you would to an insurer, insurance company, insurer, they assign it to legal language, the city, they have an obligation to defend. They will indemnify, means if a claim, cause of action proceeded to litigation and resulted in a judgment against the city, the indemnification means that party has to pay that judgment on behalf of the city. Hold the city harmless means they'll protect us again from other, they, the owner would then not turn around and sue the city for contribution or claims. So that defend, indemnify, hold harmless, it's standard language, but it refers to those different types of protections. And then the rest of the paragraph outlines the scope of what types of things the city is to be defended, indemnified and held harmless against. And it's essentially anything that arises out of the agreement. If there's, if there's an appeal or a lawsuit against the city relating to an approval of this, if the council approves it, if other things happen, implementing approvals that happen down the line, if there's a release of hazardous substances on the property and litigation results. If it turns out the city has conveyed property and it has hazardous substances on it and something happens, it's quite a broad indemnification provision.
Councilor Johnson?
But this doesn't go the opposite direction, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
There's an exception here, if something results from the sole negligence of the city, something that the city or its employees do wrong and that the claim or damage results solely from the city's action, you can see that language reflected here. Though I didn't have further, there's a definitions provision, you know, internal, sorry, initial cap term spelled out here. There are other things like Mill Pond Road Extension or Johnson Falls that should be called out, we can add to this.
Do they have Johnson Falls in there?
We can add to this section.
You missed that?
I have a fancy sign.
Careful, yes. I didn't have more. I know we were scheduled from six to nine. If council wanted a short or even longer closed session, we could certainly extend the meeting and we could do that now or we can go read and consider more. Pleasure of the council.
If you like, Mayor Proton Mayhew?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Proton Mayhew. And second by. Councilor Hallway to adjourn. Any discussion? I guess we don't need to. All as a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.